Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unargued, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight we have a conditional use hearing for the Keystone Property Group 502, West Germantown Pike, and I would ask for a motion from council to open the hearing. Is there a motion? A motion from Ms. Bandish, second from Ms. Visio. Comments or questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to open the hearing. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Visio?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And at this time, I will turn it over to our solicitor, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Manera. As you indicated, this is a conditional use hearing. The applicant is Plymouth Meeting KPG3 LLC. The property is located at 502 West Germantown Pike in Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania, 19462, tax parcel number 49-00-04120-016. The applicant this evening is represented by Robert W. Gunlock Jr., Esquire. Mr. Gunlock has just handed out some exhibits, which I'm sure he will ask to mark shortly, but we're going to mark as Township One, the affidavit of publication, which indicates that the notice for this hearing was advertised in the Times Herald on April 14, 2023, and again on April 21, 2023. Township Two will be the certification from Joel Rowe, the zoning officer of Plymouth Township, indicating that notice was mailed to residents within 150 feet radius and 500 feet on the same street on April 21, 2023. And Township Three will be the application for conditional use dated March 10, 2023. Mr. Gunlock, if you and your witnesses are ready to proceed, you can get started.
Sure.
Rob Gunlock, attorney for the applicant. Mr. Clark gave a brief summary, but by way of further background, the board may recall that we were in front of you last year concerning a text amendment to allow the redevelopment of certain underutilized office buildings for apartments in the SC zoning district. That was adopted by this board, and it allowed that conversion by conditional use. So we're here tonight, following the filing of our conditional use application, to formally request that the existing office building at 502 West Germantown Pike be allowed and be permitted to be converted to apartments. Your ordinance has a number of requirements, one of which is that there be no more than 150 units in the building, and we are proposing 149 units that are a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. You're going to hear testimony tonight as to compliance with not only the specific requirements that were contained in the ordinance, but also the general requirements in your zoning ordinance. We have five witnesses. We'll be brief and try not to overlap testimony. If we could start, Mr. Chairman, by swearing in all of the witnesses for efficiency?
Before we do, I neglected to point out two things, and luckily, Mr. Glassman reminded me of one. Mr. Gunlock, as you can see, we only have four members of council present this evening. You are comfortable moving forward this evening with only four members of council present?
Yes, and I would caveat that to say, I understand that we are going to continue this at the end of tonight's hearing to the June meeting, and so if that fifth member wanted to review the transcript, we have no objection to them reviewing it and participating at the June meeting.
Very good. And is there anyone here this evening who wishes party status in this matter? And let me briefly explain what party status is. At the conclusion of this hearing, either tonight or in June, anyone who wishes to make public comment on this application will be permitted to do so. That means you'll be able to stand up in front of council, and you'll be able to offer your opinion as to whether or not this application should be granted or denied. Party status means that you intend to present testimony or some other evidence during the course of this hearing. This is different from just making public comment. This means that you would have the right to cross-examine Mr. Gunlock's witnesses. You would also present your own witnesses. This is not an opportunity for somebody just to make public comment or voice their opinions each time one of Mr. Gunlock's witnesses testifies. While, if you're not a lawyer, we're not going to hold you to the same requirements of the rules of evidence, but you are going to be required to ask the applicant and his witnesses, or the applicant's witnesses, any questions. With that in mind, is there anyone here this evening who is seeking party status in this matter? Seeing no hands, I think it would be appropriate for Mr. Gunlock's witnesses to be sworn.
Sure. Would you all rise, please? One at a time, each state's wonderful name.
Matt Hammond, EJMO, I'm new.
Next?
Ben Wright, WRIGC.
Sorry, speak up a little bit.
Ben Wright, WRIGC.
Fred Ebert, E-B-E-R-T.
Kevin Tatlow, T-A-T-L-O-D.
It's the fifth one?
He's coming in.
Okay. Do you all sound like you're writing testimony about the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Let me just give you a brief overview of the witnesses, so you know who's coming, and maybe you can save a question to the right person. It's always good to know what each person is going to testify to. So Kevin Tatlow will testify first. He's a civil engineer from Bowler Engineering, and he'll testify as to the existing features, the site plan, the proposed improvements, and compliance with the requirements in the ordinance. The next witness is going to be Ben Wright. He's with Bernardin. He's an architect, and he'll testify about the proposed renovation plans, the redesign, bless you, of the building. The third witness is going to be Matt Hammond. Matt is a traffic engineer, and he's going to testify as to traffic and parking implications of the proposed reuse of this building from office to apartments. And then Fred Ebert is a sewer and water engineer, and he'll testify as to the impacts on sewer and water with the proposed conversion. And lastly, Rich Gottlieb, which is a principal of Keystone Property Group, Keystone Property Group through a related entity, is the owner of this building and has been the owner for approximately 10 years. So that's who you have coming in front of you. Certainly, you can ask any witness any question, but it gives you a good idea who to earmark, what questions to. Also, just by way of brief background, this isn't a new building. This is an existing office building that sits in the center, in the donut hole of the mall, that is proposed to be redeveloped. We're not changing the building, other than architecturally, and we're not proposing any exterior improvements, other than what has been recommended by some of your consultants, and we're going to implement in terms of vehicular and pedestrian improvements to the extent we can on our property. Again, please keep in mind that our property is five acres in the center of the mall. We don't control the entrances, the exits. We have a small portion of the inside that we can propose improvements. Some of the plans you're going to see, we're proposing some improvements outside of our property, some pedestrian improvements, some vehicular improvements, some restriping to make things safer and more efficient, and you'll see caveats on the plan that that's subject to us obtaining pre-approval. So we're willing to do our fair share, and more than our fair share, as long as our neighbor approves of those proposed improvements. So you'll hear testimony about that. So with that background, I'll call Kevin Tatlow first.
And Mr. Gunlock, I'm assuming, other than Mr. Gottlieb, you're going to be offering all four of these witnesses this evening as experts in their particular field, correct?
Yes.
And I believe that I am familiar with all four of your expert witnesses, and I think council is probably familiar with several of them. I know that most of, not all, I know that all of them have been admitted as experts in courts in Montgomery County and in front of townships and zoning hearing boards throughout the area. If you want to give the board some flavor of their experience and their credentials, I think that's, that's fine. I don't think you need to go into great detail before you offer them as experts.
Good, understood, thank you. And as far as the packages I gave you, they contain 19 exhibits. I'm not going to summarize them all now. We'll let each of the witnesses do it, but we'll move through promptly. And certainly, as we stated earlier, we're going to continue at the end of our testimony to a date certain in June, so if anybody had questions after reviewing this in further detail, we can address those questions at the June meeting, so you get another, another crack at us, so to speak. So with that background, please state your name for the record.
Kevin Tatlow.
And Kevin, you're a licensed professional engineer with Bowler Engineering?
Yes.
I would ask Mr. Tatlow, offer him as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
He'll be admitted as such.
Are you familiar with the subject property and the area surrounding the property?
Yes, I am.
And we have marked as Exhibit A3, an aerial of the property. Can you just generally describe the area surrounding the property and where we are on that aerial?
Sure, so the site is located within the Plymouth Meeting Mall area. It is a separate property here, a black line surrounding it. It is just south of the main mall building and just north of the existing building. The property is, the existing office building is located right here, and then the property for this office building is located down here at this corner.
We've then marked as Exhibit A4, an existing features plan that references the, the size of the property at approximately five acres and shows the office building containing approximately 174,000 square feet, correct?
Correct.
We're going to use an exhibit, I think, which is a colored exhibit, A6 on the back. Let's use that. It's an easier plan to see than the A4 plan. This is A6 in your binder. Why don't you give a little more detailed overview as to what the board sees on this plan?
Sure, so this is more of a low view, showing the existing office building right here in that property further down south. The existing mall is located just in the north here. What this plan is, is a proposed landscape plan, showing the proposed sidewalks, and landscaping improvements around the building, so improved ADA access.
And we also have another plan marked as, as A5, showing the proposed development of the property for conversion to apartments, correct?
Correct.
And that's proposed for 149 apartments, consisting of 101 one-bedroom apartments and 48 two-bedroom apartments, correct?
Correct.
And again, using this plan that we've marked as A6, can you detail the improvements that are proposed as part of the conversion of this office building to apartments?
Sure, so the existing office building will remain as is. Proposed improvements are really focused on improving the ADA access into the building. So these will be new ADA sidewalks here, new landscaping adjacent to the building down here, new sidewalk, new landscaping to the south of the building. The intent is for all the existing parking, landscaping in the parking area to remain. The one of the proposed improvements we're doing is adding a small rain guard in there. We're under the requirement for storm management, but we're taking this opportunity to remove some spaces to add a small storm management feature.
And have these plans been designed by you and compliant with the township zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the recently adopted ordinance that allows the conversion of office buildings in the SC zoning district to apartments, correct?
Yes.
And the requirements for this type of conversion are now set forth in Section 1100 of the zoning ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Do the plans and materials that have been submitted conform to those specific requirements in Section 1100 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Are you also familiar with the general requirements for the grant of a conditional use approval set forth in Section 3601 of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And will this proposed conversion and use of the building as apartments be contrary to the health, safety, and welfare of the public?
No.
Why not?
Because it's not making, it's taking what's currently out there today and trying to improve it, especially the accessibility to the existing building.
Will the conversion of this building to apartments increase the danger of fire or panic or otherwise endanger the public?
No.
Will, will this be redeveloped in compliance with the current fire ordinance requirements as part of the building permit process?
Yes, yeah, we're not improving any of the, we're not modifying any of the existing driveway access, so there will still be driveways open adjacent to the building.
Will the grant of a conditional use approval to convert the building to apartments overcrowd the land or create an undue concentration of population?
Mr. Tatlow, I'm going to ask you to just keep your voice up a little bit. I know you're looking at us, but there are people behind you who may be interested in hearing you as well, so just keep your voice up.
Could I ask, if possible, for you to turn the easel facing the audience, since we all have it in front of us, and that way they can see it? I know we don't have the best in our temporary accommodations here.
Maybe, Mr. Tatlow, if you stand there on that side, it'll be better for the people in the audience to hear you as well, let's do it.
Will the grant of the conditional use to convert the building to apartments create an adverse environmental impact on freshwater, wetlands, or floodplains through inappropriate rating practices, inadequate soil erosion control measures, or inadequate design stormwater facilities?
No.
And why not?
It's already currently developed today, and we're trying to propose adding additional landscaping there, as well as adding a small rain guard to manage the existing property.
Will the proposed use impair light and air to adjacent properties or be incompatible with the appropriate use of such property?
No.
In fact, will this be more compatible as a fully developed apartment building with the adjacent mall and the services that would be available to those residents?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the township comprehensive plan with respect to the subject property?
Yes.
And is it correct that the comprehensive plan states that the mall property should be utilized in the future for a range of uses, including multifamily dwellers?
Yes.
Would the conversion of this building to 149 apartments be consistent with the township comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And finally, will the proposed conversion of this building to apartments comply with all other applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Now, the plans have been reviewed by township staff, is that correct?
Correct.
And you're familiar with a review letter that was issued by Woodrow and Associates that we've marked as A7?
Yes.
And on that document that we've marked as A7, have you also marked in red your responses to the Woodrow review letter?
Yes.
And are all of those items, A, will comply?
Yes.
And would all those items be addressed as part of the land development approval process?
Yes, we address all of them.
So the applicant does have a pending land development application, and that would be the form to address these, correct?
Correct.
Also marked as A8 is a letter from Suburban Lighting Consultants, correct?
Yes.
And have you marked and read on that letter, A, will comply to their four minor comments and commitment to address those lighting comments as part of the land development?
Yes.
Now, have you also investigated the impact this proposed conversion would have on any environmental features on the property?
Yes.
And did you conclude no adverse impacts?
Correct.
And that's set forth in the environmental impact report we marked as A9?
Yes.
And that's primarily because there's no additional disturbance? It's already disturbed, correct?
It's already developed there, and we're trying to reduce the disturbance of the sidewalks.
And finally, have you investigated the impact this proposed conversion would have on municipal and public services?
Yes.
And did you set forth those conclusions in the municipal services impact report we've marked as Exhibit A10?
Yes.
And have you concluded that this proposed conversion can be accommodated with respect to existing public and municipal services?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Council members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Tatlow?
They're not going anywhere. If you want to catch them at the end, and you think of something too. Mr. Chairman, we can run through it and take them now or take them at the end.
If there are no questions of Mr. Gunlock, you can call your next witness.
Ben Wright? Mr. Wright, what is your occupation?
Senior designer.
You're up to keep your voice up. And where are you employed?
Bernardin.
And what type of licenses do you hold?
I don't hold any. I couldn't, I don't hold any.
You're, you're an architect with Bernardin, right?
Yeah.
And you work on architectural designs?
Yep.
And you're being offered, and, and part of your day-to-day work, you work on design plans for apartment buildings, correct?
Yep.
Okay. I'm offering, Mr. Wright, as an expert in the field of architectural design.
He'll be admitted as such.
You're familiar with the Plymouth Township zoning ordinance as to this proposed conversion?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the subject property and the existing building?
Yes.
You've visited the building there, correct?
Yeah.
And you are familiar with the applicant's proposal to improve and convert the building to apartments?
Yes.
And we've marked as Exhibit A11, some plans and floor plans, correct?
Yes.
If the board could turn to the plans behind Tab A11, Mr. Wright, I'm going to ask you just to walk the board through these plan sheets.
So the first plan you see is labeled LDO1, site plan. This is just the site of the current building, showing pink, green scape around the building and the floor plan of the proposed building.
So this is the first floor, floor plan, correct?
Yep.
And it shows additional greenery and landscaping being added around all sides of the building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the next sheet is also the first floor plan that labels the different spaces, correct?
Yes.
And the center core, that's a light green that says amenity, this would be common space?
Yes.
And doors to access that would be on both sides of the building?
Yeah.
And there's a package room, I see, a break room, the, the office or the, the management office is right by the front door there, correct? And then there's some, what else is on the first floor?
There'd be water electrical room, recycling room, trash room.
And some apartments, correct?
I mixed up one bedroom, two bedrooms.
On the first floor?
Yep.
Then the, the next plan sheet shows the typical layout for floors second through seven. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there are some limited amenities on, on each and every floor, plus predominantly one-bedroom units with the two bedrooms on the corner, correct? Then, as we go to the next sheet, it shows floor eight through nine, and that shows more second, more two-bedroom units on the eighth and ninth floors, correct?
Yes.
And then finally, the last sheet is a rendering of, of new skin on, on the building, correct?
Yep.
You would agree that's an improvement over what's out there now? Right now, you have almost a concrete bunker with very small windows?
Yep.
You're opening up here with more windows?
Yep.
And the applicant is not proposing balconies, correct?
No.
They do not want balconies for clutter and safety reasons, correct?
Yep.
And the last sheet is just another exterior rendering. This rendering depicts generally what the applicant has agreed in terms of improvements to that building, correct?
Yep.
That's all I had for Mr. Wright.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wright? Mr. Gunlock, I don't think this is a question for Mr. Wright. I think it's probably more of a question for Mr. Gottlieb, who you plan on calling.
Yes.
But when you do call Mr. Gottlieb, I would like you to ask him if what we are looking right out, right now in these renderings is going to be substantially similar to what will be presented during the land development process and what will be, what will be built? Not saying you're going to show us one thing that looks really beautiful and then switch it out, and not saying that's substantially similar. You and I can argue over what that means later on, but we, I think council would like to know that what they're looking at right now is essentially very close to what's going to be built out there. So if you can ask Mr. Gottlieb that, it would be helpful.
I will. Calling Matt Hammond. Mr. Hammond, what is your occupation?
I'm a civil engineer specializing in traffic and transportation.
I think the board's familiar with Mr. Hammond and his firm, Traffic Planning and Design. I would ask him as offered as an expert in the field of traffic engineering. Mr. Hammond, are you familiar with the subject property and the area surrounding the property?
Yes, I am.
And are you familiar with the existing access ways to the subject property?
Yes.
Could you please describe how one would access this building in the center of the Plymouth Meeting Mall?
Sure, so starting from the exterior, I think everyone's familiar with the, with the Plymouth Meeting Mall itself. The mall is served by six access points, three from Germantown Pike, and three from Hickory Road. The first access from the south is a right-in-only on Germantown Pike. Moving from the south to the north, there's a full-access signalized driveway that's considered the main access to the mall. Next access to the north, and the last access on Germantown Pike is a right-in-right-out only driveway closer to the Chipotle, nearest Hickory. On Hickory, traveling from Germantown Pike east, you have a right-in, right-out, left-out driveway, no lefts-in, the driveway closest to Germantown Pike. Then moving east, you have a full-access driveway, signalized, allowing all movements in and out. And then finally, on the east side, is a third access, which is right-in, right-out, left-in only, no lefts-out that driveway. And that's a driveway closest to the Boomerang. Obviously, those six driveways serve the property. There is a ring road internal to the mall that, that essentially disperses traffic throughout the mall, depending on the various locations you desire to visit. But obviously, the location of the building itself, you would see the ability to access this, this property from, from all six of those existing access points.
Now, are you familiar with the applicant's plan to convert this existing building previously used for offices to apartments?
I am.
And have you performed a preliminary evaluation as to the traffic and, and parking implications of this proposed conversion?
I have.
And can you describe what was involved in this investigation and, and the results of your investigation?
Sure, and I believe it's, let me jump ahead, there's a Tab 13. The exhibit book talks about, provides for what we call a transportation impact study dated March 9, 2023, last revised with today's date. That's essentially, as Mr. Gunlock had stated, an analysis that we prepared looking at a number of things traffic-related. Looks at the existing roadway network, which I briefly just discussed, any potential major roadway improvements planned in the area to impact the property itself. It also looks at the traffic generated by the proposed use. It compares it to the traffic generated, of the, traffic generated by the office building if it were to be fully occupied. And there's also a section that goes on to talk about parking, the number of parking spaces that we would expect to be needed by an office building versus the number of parking spaces we expect to be needed by the subject development. There's also discussion regarding internal circulation, both pedestrian and vehicular circulation, and some recommendations with respect to enhancements that we could make to the existing pedestrian and vehicular circulation, meaning surrounding the building, as well as obviously conclusions with respect to the analysis performed.
Let's take them one at a time here, starting with traffic. What generates more traffic? This building fully occupied and used for offices versus this building fully occupied and used for 149 apartments?
So a building of 149 apartment units would generate significantly less traffic than would a fully occupied, approximately 174,000 square foot office building. When I say significantly less, we looked at full-time periods. We looked at the 24-hour period of the course of the day, how much traffic would be generated between the two uses. We looked at the And in all instances, the apartments would generate significantly less, between, anywhere between 35% approximately, and almost 80% less traffic when compared to existing fully occupied office buildings.
And how about that same analysis with respect to parking?
So parking, again, similar results in that the apartments would generate or require approximately 50% of the parking an office building would acquire when comparing them to the two, of again, 100, approximately 174,000 square foot office building versus 149 apartment units.
And you also said that you reviewed the traffic review letter prepared by general engineering that we've marked as A15, correct?
That is correct.
And you've indicated your comments on there, and all of those are, will comply, is that correct?
All will comply. There are two clarification items within the letter. The first one, the, under Traffic Review Comments, Letter A, this comment asks for a traffic impact study to be completed, and that traffic impact statement should be submitted to the council for review. I would submit that we did provide for that traffic impact study statement that was submitted on March 3 as part of the conditional use packet. One thing to clarify, again, further in that review comment talks about that the applicant should coordinate with PENDOT to determine if the change in land use necessitates a submission of a study to PENDOT. And I would submit that based on the fact that there's significantly less traffic being generated by the use that, and the proposed changes that being made to the access points, that we should not need to seek any correspondence or any sort of opinion of PENDOT. Also, Letter E, just again, clarification, new new driveways are proposed, considerable that comment shouldn't be applicable. And then Letter F talks about the number of parking spaces being provided, and just provides some additional clarification with the breakdown of those parking spaces.
Now, your study has a amended date of May 8, which is today. That was just amended to correct two items in the report. One, you had 165,000 square foot office building where technically it's a hundred...
173,228.
173,228, so you adjusted the numbers to reflect that, correct?
Correct.
Which created a little more of a disparity between the traffic generated from an office versus the apartments, correct?
That is correct.
And you also clarified it's 149 apartments, not 150, correct?
Correct. And also added a statement in there that any of the proposed recommendations as it relates to vehicular pedestrian circulation, that if they are off the property, that they would be, that we would require approval from Creek more improvement.
And there's also a plan that we've attached behind is Exhibit 14, which is a site plan showing some proposed improvements in red. Can you describe those proposed improvements and why you're proposing those on and adjacent to the subject property?
Sure. And I'm sure that the exhibit's a little bit busy with all of the markings on there, but essentially, what that exhibit shows are potential improvements, again, related to the vehicular and pedestrian circulation surrounding the property. We noticed upon review of the site that a number of the painted markings were, excuse me, eroded or in poor condition. So we wanted to make sure that we could potentially enhance some of those pedestrian markings, some of the, some of the areas where we expect pedestrian activity to occur and has occurred in the past, provision of ADA ramps in certain locations, provisions of additional crosswalks, as well as doing a better job to demarcate the existing travel lanes throughout the area for vehicular traffic and providing for additional stop signs and stop bars and things of that nature, just to kind of enhance that area from the vehicular and pedestrian standpoint.
Few final questions under Section 3601 of the zoning ordinance. In your professional opinion, will the proposed project cause any streets having a level of service of A, B, or C to worsen to an overall level of service D or lower? Or any street having a level of service of D or E to worsen to the next lower level of service at a signalized intersection?
No. That's due to the fact that we're proposing to generate significantly less traffic than would be generated by the prior use.
In your professional opinion, will this proposed conversion create a hazardous traffic condition by the inappropriate location of points of ingress and egress or design of other transportation facilities?
No, we are not proposing any changes to the existing access points serving the property, and actually proposing, subject to approval by Creek, enhancements to the vehicular pedestrian area surrounding the building.
In your professional opinion, has the proposed project been properly designed with regard to internal circulation and parking?
Yes. And again, we have proposed certain enhancements, subject to Creek's approval to further bolster the pedestrian vehicular circulation surrounding the building.
That's all I have for Mr. Hammond.
Members of council, do you have any questions for Mr. Hammond, bearing in mind that the traffic study is one of the documents that will be reviewed by the township's traffic engineer and maybe the subject of some further discussion at the meeting, the meeting in June, depending on what the review of the traffic engineer is at that time. But if you have any questions for Mr. Hammond, feel free to ask.
I have two quick questions.
Okay.
Understanding that this building would create less traffic than a similar office building, there'll still be more traffic than there is today, do some of the measures that you've proposed include like traffic calming?
So I think by virtue of the fact that proposing enhanced crosswalks, providing crosswalks in certain areas where they don't exist today, pedestrian signage, looking to stop traffic and provide for stop signs and pavement markings in certain areas where they don't exist, I would say that yes, this is, we're looking to clean up, go clean up that area. Whether or not you would aim to classify them as traffic calming, I would say that they, in my opinion, it would be traffic calming measures, especially in that area, about a more visual for the activity that existed as part of the office building and would exist as part of the apartments.
Thank you. And just one little quick question. Can you tell us how space would, spaces, parking spaces would be allocated to residents? What would that look like?
I believe, and I may not be the best person to answer that, but my understanding is, is that there is a, an agreement in place between Keystone and Creek with respect to shared parking. I believe the number of parking spaces required for the residential units is about 225 parking spaces. There's the area to the, mainly to the west of the building, and that there would also be some shared parking that would occur mainly surrounding the building, but I'm sure that Mr. Gottlieb or Mr. Talow can further refine that response. But I would say, I would mention that the number of parking spaces necessary for the apartments are significantly less than what was experienced by the office building.
And I assume that would be in the final plan, so we actually see what the allocation is and what that parking situation would look like?
Yes.
In a final plan?
Yes.
Yes. There is, just for the record, a cross easement agreement between the parties for parking, so we're not proposing to specifically designate spaces for the apartments. The apartment parking would just naturally be around that building because other uses would be parking around their building, so. And right now, if you go back there and take a look, and I encourage you to do it between now and the next meeting, there is hundreds and hundreds of vacant spaces back there, no matter what time you go. We would envision they'd park closer to the building. If Creek was to authorize us to designate certain parking spaces, then we probably would take advantage of that, but that would require their consent and vice versa.
Thank you.
And Mr. Gunnlocke, this will again probably be a land development issue, but the township might possibly require a note on the plan indicating that there is not dedicated parking in and around the building, so that note, anyone renting there will be aware of that, so the township is not receiving the phone calls at peak time for a movie or something and somebody saying, they're in my spot. So we don't have to do that. So we will talk about that note on the plan during land development.
Sure.
If there are any further questions for Mr. Hammond? Gunnlocke can call your next witness?
Yes, Mr. Fred Ebert.
Do you want to share, Fred?
No, I'm good.
Please state your name for the record.
Frederick Eric Ebert.
And you're a professional engineer?
Yes, I am.
And what area do you specialize?
Water and wastewater engineer.
I would ask that Mr. Ebert be recognized an expert in the field of water and wastewater engineering.
He'll be admitted as such.
You're familiar with the subject property and the uses surrounding the property?
Yes, I am.
And you've been here tonight and heard that testimony of the other witnesses as to the proposed project?
Yes, I have.
And you're generally familiar with the water and sewage systems surrounding the property?
Yes, I am.
And who services the water?
Aqua Pennsylvania.
And is it fair to say there's more than sufficient water to service the building?
Yes, there absolutely is for both domestic as well as fire protection.
And who services it with respect to public sewer?
Plymouth Township.
Okay. So you're familiar that the existing building on the property that was previously used for office contains approximately 173,228 square feet of office space and another 2,000 square feet of first floor office/mall space that's attached for previously restaurant service to office occupants?
Yes, I am.
Now, let me just run you through the calculations briefly. What, what number, based upon your familiarity with sewage planning, what number would be used for purposes of office occupants for sewage planning?
The PA DEP would require us to provide sewage planning for approximately 1,732 employees.
That's one space per 100 square feet?
Yes.
For the office tower?
That's how DEP requires.
And DEP also then would require 10 gallons per person per day?
Yes.
And so that would equate for, for planning, if you were proposing a new office building of 17,323 gallons per day?
That's correct. They would take the office area times 1/10 of a gallon per day per square foot would be the PA DEP requirements.
Would there be a separate requirement for that 2,000 square feet of first floor restaurant area, breakfast, lunch, they would open up for?
Absolutely. DEP would definitely make us break that out. They would require us to identify the number of seats, the number of seatings per day, and require us to use the designated flow for that, or provide water records from a similar facility.
Now, have you performed an initial investigation as to the projected sewer needs for 149 apartments?
Yes, I have.
And have you completed a, a report that we've included as an exhibit here titled "Ebert Sewer Flow Justification Letter and Report" that's marked as A16?
Yes, I did.
And does this compare a number of other area, recently constructed area apartment buildings as their existing sewage usage?
Yes. It's based on water records. The report letter contains five similar facilities that were all recently built or renovated within the last three to five years. DEP prefers them to be done in the last three years, what we have to impact for COVID. It also includes three PA DEP approval letters for recently approved apartment projects. The water facilities, some facilities were also a very similar size to this projected job.
And what did DEP accept for similar-sized apartment units in terms of gallons per unit per day?
In one case, it was 100 gallons per day per apartment unit, and the other two, it's 125 gallons per day per apartment unit.
And notwithstanding that you, your report identifies less than 100 gallons per unit, you are proposing to use the more conservative number of 125?
Yes.
Gallons per day per unit?
Yes. The report actually identifies over a year of water records, all of them ranging from 59 gallons per day per apartment to 85 gallons per day. That's water consumption, so you have to account for I and I and the additional flow before it gets there. It would justify 100, but my report recommends 125 gallons per day per apartment unit. All of the other apartment units, there were no studio apartments in the similar facilities. However, there were some that had three-bedroomed facilities, that's wild.
And that's because today, water saving devices are a requirement, correct?
And you can definitely see the trend as they get newer, you see that the flow's reducing in all the facilities.
And did you include or prepare a chart that we've got in the binder at A17 that just summarizes the proposed usage for the office building and the proposed uses for the apartments, correct?
Yes, we did. Yes, I did.
And, and in your professional opinion, the proposed apartment uses is no greater than the use for the office with the first floor restaurant, is that correct?
That is correct. Approximately the same. It's approximately the same, very close.
Notwithstanding that determination, has the township sewage engineer expressed some concern regarding conveyance capacity?
Yes, they have.
And where do they, where do they express some potential concern by Arthur's Court?
It's actually below Arthur's Court, in the Sussex apartment complex. There's a 10-inch sanitary sewer line down there. So I prepared a letter today that we'll be submitting to the township. They asked me to outline the flow study. So we have outlined, prevented a area for the flow metering to occur. Then we've outlined how we will use that flow, the data from that flow, for approximately a month, which is the same as the township required of the previous mall expansion in the summer of 2019. So we have a same exact flow monitoring period. Based on that flow data, we will then go out and either use township asphalt or survey to determine the slope of the existing pipes in that area, and then we'll prepare a report that will calculate the existing flows plus our projected or equal flows compared to the capacity of the pipe in accordance with DEP standards.
Okay. So that, you're going to work with Mr. Mason here at the township, once he approves your methodology, you will, the owner will be engaging a company under his inspection and supervision to install a, a flow meter, is that what it's called?
That's correct.
And that will measure the sewage capacity that's running through that line to determine if there's sufficient sewage capacity in the lines for this proposed apartment use, correct?
Yes. It will measure the actual flows, will then calculate the capacity of the pipes based on the slopes, and that will determine the available capacity in the lines.
And that's notwithstanding the fact that this existing, that there is an existing building there that has sewage planning module approval to be used for, for office purposes, correct?
Yes. We could technically go in and occupy the building right now, and DEP would require us to have planning for that, that exact amount.
But we're not. We're going to take the more conservative approach and check the lines per Mr. Mason's request, correct?
Yes. And we're also not going with 100 gallons per day per apartment, which DEP's previously approved. We're recommending a 125 gallons per day per apartment.
And then we're going to submit that information, it gets accumulated by an independent company, correct? And then when they submit that to you, they submit it to Mr. Mason as well, correct?
Yes. CSL will try to use the same company that did the previous flow metering. If we can get them, if their availability down here, we would have them, and that data will be submitted to everyone simultaneously. Data's data. That's why we use a third party.
And just a few final questions. In your professional opinion, is there adequate water and sewage capacity to accommodate this proposed apartment use, given its previously approved use for, for office here?
Yes.
The usage, the usage is any greater?
The usage is very similar, and the fire protection and domestic facility needs for water are very similar, or more stringent with an office.
And will the proposed apartments have a negative impact on the surrounding properties of existing water and sewer facility servicing area?
No. It's exactly the same as it was previously.
And finally, we've received a letter from Mr. Mason, a review letter that we marked as A18, and this contains your reply comments, is that correct?
That's correct. And I'm actually submitting today a, he requested a outline of the proposed flow study and method of analysis, which I prepared this afternoon and will be submitted tomorrow.
Okay. That's all I have for Mr. Ebert.
Do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Ebert? This is the other area that we discussed earlier, that there is additional reports and some additional... Do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Ebert? This is the other area that we discussed earlier, that there is additional reports and some additional information which will be provided to the township sewer engineer. It will be reviewed and then more fully discussed at the continued hearing in, in June.
Okay. Can I call my last witness? Staying on time, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent.
Sir, state the value of your name.
Richard Gottlieb.
Is that your last name?
G-O-T-T-L-I-E-B.
So I swear to testimony about the issue for the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Where are you currently employed, Mr. Gottlieb?
Keystone Development Investment, formerly known as Keystone Property.
And what is the, the business of Keystone?
Real estate.
And how long has Keystone been owning and developing real estate?
Approximately 32 years.
And we've marked behind Tab 2 some existing projects that Keystone has done in the area. Do you want to just very briefly give, give a flavor of a couple of those projects that Keystone has worked on?
We've primarily, through our history, been real estate, office development people. We buyhold of office buildings and renovate them, upgrade them. We've also moved into mixed use, multi-family. So you see things like the Curtis down in Center City, 16 Walnut Street. We have apartments, offices, life science, retail, events. We just finished in, in Concha Hockin, the Sora Project, which is a corporate headquarters along with a new, a new hotel with two restaurants and a, and a public plaza in the middle. And we've done things like, this is one on the right is Rose Street, which is a media which we have upgraded and upgraded.
Now, you, you purchased this property in August of 2013, correct?
Correct.
We've marked the deed as Exhibit A-1. You're obviously familiar with the subject property and the area surrounding the property?
Yes.
And you are familiar with the, the testimony that's been presented here?
Yes.
We're going to talk a little about the architectural in a minute, but let's start with this building here. The existing building is approximately 274,000 square feet of office space, correct?
Hundred seventy-four.
Hundred seventy-four thousand square feet. Thank you.
See you under a window.
And the first floor, we talked about a, a small adjacent building down there as well with commercial purposes. How, how long has this building been, been 100% vacant?
Over four years.
Over four years. So you had some tenants when you acquired it in 2013, but over time they have all moved out?
Yes.
Okay. And have you attempted and used best efforts and good faith to try to lease this building up for offices?
Absolutely.
And you did a whole marketing campaign over there at one point in time, correct?
Yes.
And have you been successful in that?
No.
And why not?
The market has changed, there's a couple of reasons. One, the building's older and needs significant upgrades into the facility. Plus, with COVID, the, the need for office space has been decreased and the type of office building, the smaller floor plates, just isn't working the way it used to for people are looking for different types of buildings, newer, more lateral spread, like triple floors.
And is this building compatible though with this floor plate for conversion to apartments?
Actually works better with smaller floor plate for apartments.
And we looked at the floor plans earlier, is it because you can lay them out exterior wise with a common hall down the middle? Works well?
Yes, and it's not as, most office buildings are so that from the exterior window in the center is too deep for an apartment. This is a narrow floor plate.
Now, you're proposing to convert the building to 149 apartments with 101 one-bedroom units and 48 two-bedroom units, correct?
Correct.
And why is that a good mix here?
We did a market study, so this is partly the mix the market study was looking for. The market study, and what we're trying to attract would be young professionals or retired people who are leaving their, their single family residence and want the downsides.
Okay, maybe they keep an apartment here because they're from the township and they buy a house down south or something like that?
Correct, or the shore or something like that, yes.
Is it also a good location, given the adjacent mall and everything it has to offer in terms of shopping and entertainment and food?
Absolutely. It's what people want to know, they want a more walking environment. Having a Whole Foods, you know, a couple yards away is a, is a big plus, plus it, and you have a movie theater, plenty of places to eat, and you have the whole highway system. It's so easy to get to and there's bus lines even that end or start anymore. So, you know, offers a lot for residences.
What type of amenities would you have here?
We would have the typical amenities you'd find in newer buildings today, you know, the, the community rooms, the, the gym, outdoor areas to have some barbecue and to sit, walk your dog.
Can't forget the dogs, right?
Not today.
No, no. And finally, in your opinion, is this a good location for apartments here at the, at the center of the Plymouth Main Mall?
Yes.
Final questions. We included as Exhibit A-19 a fiscal study. You engage a Mr. David Babbitt to complete the fiscal study, correct?
Yes.
And does that study indicate a net positive impact to the township and the school district?
Yes.
This project?
Approximately $36,000 of net positive to township and almost $61,000 net positive to district.
And with this unit mix of 101 singles of the 149, Mr. Babbitt concluded that there would be few of any school age children in this building, correct?
I don't expect it. It's just not, the location might conducive to, probably conducive to living, not conducive to children.
Finally, there was a question that Mr. Clark raised, that the, the architecturals that are in the booklet here, would you agree that your architectural, your final architectural plans will be substantially similar to the renderings that we've marked in, in the booklet?
Yes. We have crease window, window lines and modernized build.
And new windows, right?
Absolutely, all new windows.
And you don't like balconies, correct?
No.
Yeah, creates potential safety issues or people outside and you're not proposing balconies here, right? More cleaner lines on the building?
Yeah, becomes more place to smoke.
And in terms of addressing comments regarding parking around the building and some additional pedestrian and, and parking or circulation improvements that Mr. Hammond proposed, you would agree as part of the land development process to look to, to implement those to improve the situation and provide some better traffic direction and calming, particularly through your property?
Yes.
That's all I have for Mr. Gottlieb.
Do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Gottlieb?
I have one really quick question. I know we're running out of time, but just ask quickly. And I'm not trying to challenge your map, but I just want to make sure I understand this. So looking at the, the net, the annual net surplus, we've got 35K to the township, six, almost 68K to the school district, but then there's a total that says 286,000. I just, I just want to be sure I understand. I mean, it's, I mean, it's helpful for us to be able to speak to that when we share
I think what it is, is the net because what he did was, that's if there were no school age children, he had to then assume there'd be a certain number of school age children and he factored in what the cost is to educate the school age children and that gets deducted as part of the report. But I can certainly provide some follow-up from Mr. Babbitt on that point.
That'd be great. Yeah, I would just like to understand it. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Rich, you can look into that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Gunlock, that concludes all of your witnesses?
Yes.
And as we indicated before, we are going to recess this hearing until Monday, June 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this room.
So we will take public comment in, in June as well. If there is anybody who's here tonight that would like to offer any public comment, since you're here tonight, you're certainly welcome to come forward and do that, or you can wait till June when we have the completed final reports at the conclusion of the hearing. So if there is any, anybody who would like to take opportunity for public comment tonight at this time, you may. And like I said, if you, if you want to wait, we will offer it again in June. And you'd have to just come up to the microphone. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
We are recessed again until-
Did I just call you Mr. Chairman?
You did indeed, and I kind of liked a field promotion, so I didn't say anything. We are recessed until June 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you.